Let's call the regular session meeting of the September 10th, 2019 Select Board Meeting to order. The first item on our agenda tonight is a Pledge of Allegiance, so if we could all stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, we just have three brief announcements this evening. First, the state will be conducting a second round of aerial spraying in Grafton and surrounding communities starting tonight at 7:00, so right about now. Please see the town website for further details. Also, the Recreation Department will be holding their annual scarecrow building contest on September 29th from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There is more information in the Recreation Fall and Winter Program booklet. And finally, on announcements, congratulations to Barbara Connolly. The state senate has issued to her an official citation, and it reads as follows, "Be it known that the Massachusetts senate hereby extends congratulations to the Grafton Senior Center in recognition of the celebration of National Senior Center Month with appreciation for all you do for seniors in the community, and be it further known that the Massachusetts senate extends its best wishes for the continued success." That this citation be duly signed by the president of the senate and attested to and a copy thereof transmitted by the clerk of the senate." So congratulations to Barbara and all of you who participate in the Grafton Senior Center. Thank you very much. All right, in keeping with our new agenda item, I will open up the floor to public comments before we get into our regular schedule. So if anybody has any public comments, please come up to the microphone, say your name, where you're from, and try and speak as clearly as possible.
I'll try. Bruce Spring, 71 Potter Hill Road. I've been making my way around to the individual boards and committees and asking for just a brief announcement time. My community outreach meeting will be September 26th in Conference Room F upstairs at 7:00. We're advertising in the paper, of course, but I've also made my rounds through the different boards, so Planning Board and Board of Health last night couldn't make it over to EDC, so I asked their chair, of course, there's time conflicts and all these.
Community outreach for what?
Community outreach meeting for the retail marijuana facility at 130 and 134 Worcester Street. We've also taken out an ad in the paper, we'll run it for two weeks. We've also asked staff to help support us to get as many people there as possible. And I reached out to Mr. Vitoma and asked if we could have it taped, so we can use it. Probably won't go out live because it's a Thursday evening, but the very least it gives everybody the opportunity to see it if they can make it that night.
Okay.
So that's what we're looking for. Appreciate all the attendance that we can get. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else in the public comments? All right, moving along. First item on the schedule is Worcester County Mosquito Control Project.
So you received an email from the Board of Health yesterday. They voted to support a warrant article, which is on the draft warrant that we have. And I believe you had Tim DeChampson here maybe three weeks ago. So we've tried this twice since I've been in Grafton and probably one time before that, and it's failed. With the recent triple E issues that we're having and the announcement of the aerial spraying that the state is doing, it's probably a worthwhile discussion to have with the community again and ask them to support the initiative. It's not like it was in the 80s where trucks just drove down streets and just blasted the air with this chemical. It's, you can call when they do surveillance, you know all this, I won't be redundant, but in terms of finding mosquitoes that have triple E and then treating those areas where that they would germinate from, if you will, they have an aggressive tire program to pick up tires that just hold water, and that's where a lot of mosquitoes come from. We do larva sighting, but they would now do that, so there'd be a little bit of a reduction in the operating budget for the Board of Health, because that would then be borne by the mosquito control program. There will be a charge to the cherry sheet, $71,000, so that'll be part of the adjustment we'll make in October if we were to vote for it. Interestingly enough, we'll probably make that adjustment before the actual vote happens, because Article 1 will happen before the article for mosquito control. So you can never get the timing exact, so we'll probably make that adjustment. And I think we have enough revenue coming in between various sources, including both free cash, new growth, and the release of overlay to cover anything like the $71,000 that's needed. So that's a long and short of it. I think it might have been on the agenda, because we thought that the Board of Health might come in to have a discussion with you in more detail, but since they met last night, couldn't come tonight. And we took their lead and put it on the warrant. I think we're covered, just making sure people are aware of what it means to be part of central mass mosquito control is what we need to do outreach on now going forward.
I think I would like to have them come in at some point between now and the Fall Town Meeting, just to coordinate messaging if we're going to be supporting this, because I recall the last time this was out there, and a lot of the commentary that I've seen so far sort of mirrors what I heard before. Rightfully or wrongfully, people get afraid when there's chemicals dropping from the sky. And I know this is the state that's doing this tonight, but I think there is some concern about environmental impacts and impacts on other species and mosquito mitigation, and I think what people do need to know is this isn't just chemicals. This is, like you said, an aggressive still water remediation program where they are getting rid of the tires, and they are doing the pellet work, putting the pellets into the places where the mosquitoes breed. So if we could maybe talk to the Board of Health and have somebody from WCMCP come in and coordinate, that would be good.
Yeah. We could help with that.
Okay, anyone else? All right. Moving along to resignations, are there none?
There are none.
All right, it's good we made it through a week. Number three appointments, Select Board, a election worker, two election workers, Joyce Berkwitz and Paula Berkwitz.
I'm of the board vote to appoint Joyce Berkwitz and Paula Berkwitz as election workers.
Second motion.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations Joyce and Paula. Appointments, Town Administrator, there are none. So moving on to new business, first up tonight, we have Nature's Remedy Host Agreement.
Yes, Bob Carr contacted me last week. He's been also working with Planning and Joe Layden. Three years ago, you signed a medical host agreement with Nature's Remedy. They had an approval from the Planning Board for, I'm gonna guess, a 25,000, 30,000 square foot building, which will now expand. And since Bob's already made his way up here, I had this whole spiel planned for you. But we want to, A, expand, and we need to do another host agreement for not retail, but for a grow facility. So we hope to have that before you for the next meeting or the one soon thereafter. They are required by the state to have host agreements for retail establishments and grow processing facilities. So we're using the Lakeville model, which we sent to you, we sent to Ginny Kramer, we'll give you the copy. You gave us one, we had council look at it, and ship that back to you for logistics. We're not asking the board to ratify that tonight, it's just more of a reintroduction to Nature's Remedy and to Bob Carr and what his plan is for the site at Centennial, which will add tax revenue and just be a grow facility without a retail component.
Indeed. Hi. Good evening, thank you. Bob Carr with Nature's Remedy of Massachusetts. I'm also here with John Brady and Ben Hardworker from, also with Nature's Remedy. Yeah, as Tim stated, we were here actually more than three years ago for a letter of support. Back then, under the medical program, they required the town to support your endeavors, or a letter of non-opposition. Back then, the stigma even medical was tough to get through. We were here for, I think, the better part of six months, fighting it through, and at the end, we won a contentious, you know, vote of three to two, walked out of here with a letter of non-opposition, but it was great. You know, you got us up and going, but at the same time, we're also working, because we weren't sure which way that vote was gonna go, we were also simultaneously, we felt we needed to look at other options as well. So we found a location down at Lakeville, which was a pre-existing building. We ultimately built out a facility down there, it's about, the entire site is about 50,000 square feet. So that's completed, we have started growing under the adult use program. But we want to expand at this point, we have the opportunity to expand there, or we would really like to come back to Grafton, is what we'd like to do. We actually own the property here. The plans are done, complete. The only thing different we would do to the plans is we'd probably add a second floor to it, so we could get additional space in there for processing and for additional grow area, which we're allowed to do within, you know, our abilities to be under the 100,000 square foot canopy program that the CCC allows you. So we're well under that in Lakeville, we'd like to add to that here in Grafton. Under the medical program, there was just a letter of support this time around, there's no letter of support required. We did, as Tim said, we had a community host agreement, we need another community host agreement as you have before you. It's pretty much the same as we, well, it is the same as we have in Lakeville, which would work great here. It allows a, I don't know if you call it a tax, in the world of what we pay on these community host agreements, but it's $25 a pound for material that leaves the building. So that's whether it's in flower form or in oil form. So we estimate that to be somewhere, when up and fully operational, around 20,000 pounds, which we revert to about $500,000 in revenue to the town. That's once we're fully operational. So that's it in a nutshell. Do you have, if you have questions, myself or John or Ben are here to answer any other questions that you have that... Oh, one other thing, is within this footprint of this 3,200 square feet that we have, we've contemplated carving out a 2,500 square foot area for retail. It wouldn't be for us, because we have our three retail locations, and that's all you're allowed to have. But it would be allowed for another company that would like to come in, they could use it, because it's zoned properly, we have tons of parking, and it's off the beaten path, it's not an issue with traffic or parking. We are doing a similar thing down at Lakeville, we've done the almost identical thing, we've carved off a 25 or 3,000 square foot section of our area, and we actually have a, somebody else coming in there that has no relationship with us. We're hoping that we can wholesale to them, because we have our cultivation and we'll have processing and products out of our kitchen for that dispensary.
Just if I may.
Sure.
You said 3,200 feet, you meant 32,000.
32,000, my apologies.
So I just want to get, because that number will change, because the plans you have before Planning were from 2017?
Yes.
And you would revise those to be larger for the second floor?
Yes, yeah, no, we will be going back through Planning. The good news is, the footprint will stay the same, so we don't, our parking will stay the same. We're just going up. In the park, I believe, we're allowed to, I think you're allowed to be up as far as eight, like 80-plus feet, you know, we would be probably in around 40 feet.
The piece about the carve-out, because you were here with Machete before, and the board gave a host agreement to Machete, because you were gonna not build and let him do a smaller retail location there, that would be, we have three, that one would be off the table, so to speak.
Yes.
But we have four.
Well, he has told me in private that he's seen some of the activity down here, within, that it's apparent that there's potentially another location within the park, there's one just outside the park, I forget what road that's on, and then there's, and then there's the current one, that's...
On Worcester Street.
Yeah.
But you bring up a good point, because the town linked its licensing to liquor licenses. We can only have two host agreements, two retail marijuana establishments. And the philosophy from May to the board, to really put the fire under people to get it built, was to say, first one approved, you're right. So I have three, you know, I have four if I include Machete, but if he drops off, then I really have three. So your space for the 25 or 3,000 cutout area for the retail, unless the bylaw changed, that would be near impossible. I wouldn't say you shouldn't do a separate host agreement with that entity, but I don't want to mislead you, and I don't want to mislead that applicant potentially, that there may not be that component there if those other two get built ahead of it.
We are aware of that. It's just, when we start these things, we tend to move along, and we already have, this is not like, this isn't, in the world of the CCC, the way they run their regulations, for us, Nature's Remedy, this isn't typically a new application. The CCC looks at it as a new application. However, because we're priority applicants, because way back when, when you gave us a letter of support under medical, that actually put us into a different pot, and that was, that's been very beneficial for us all along the process. So we tend to get a little bit better treatment than people that are just coming into the fall right now. So because of that, we may be able to move along the process a little bit quicker. I'm not saying we can, you know, these things cost a lot of money, the financing is, we're currently putting that all together at the same time, so, but, you know, we feel, once we've committed, that we'll move along fairly quickly in the process. But we'll see.
We talked on the phone about, you know, if retail were to be the thing you needed in order to do the big 32,000 square foot facility, I didn't want it to get hung up, and if we were, then the board needs to make a decision about how it wants to deal with that. Because I think you, you know, me looking at all the players, are financially suited, because you already have one built and you're growing, you, in my eyes, are ahead of everybody else in terms of that process. So the board would have to consider, how does that work, especially if you're in a different pot, as you say, relative to the CCCs, because you were already approved from medical. So...
We're here to...
Yeah, but it's a discussion that you all would have to grapple with.
But if somebody were to go into their retail facility, from what I'm hearing, it would not be them, so that applicant may or may not have that special.
That's the problem.
That's right.
Because that person, whoever that entity is, could be somebody that has locations other places, and maybe they are for their, you know, they do have that relationship, or maybe they're brand new. So it's kind of, it's a risk, but it's a risk clearly they're well aware of.
We're taking, we're here to cultivate, so to answer your question, regardless of this retail component, that's, we're doing this because we think it could be a benefit to town Grafton, because certainly we can't, again, we have our three locations taken, so...
Where are your other locations? One, Lakeville?
Yes, Lakeville, well, that's our cultivation, is Lakeville. But we're in Raleigh, we're in Tingsborough, and we're in Millbury.
And they're all up and running?
No, Millbury is, we have permission to, you go through multiple stages of final approvals, and we have our final approval, to the point where we've, we've been growing for about six weeks down at Lakeville at this point, so we're green down there. So we don't have product for our shelves in Millbury, which we've been approved to sell, so we've been wholesaling products. So what they want you to do is to, they want you to get your product in, you have to enter it within the state online website, and so we've done that, so we have wholesale product, the vault is full, we're just, and they've come in and they've inspected, we're waiting for a piece of paper to say, go ahead and start selling. We have retail people ready to go, we're, it's 100%, if they told us tomorrow, you can start, we could start the next day, that's how ready we are. So, but that's how this wholesale arrangement is working, this, it's all being commoditized for, you know, other retailers. So that's ready. Tingsborough is under construction, it's about three-quarters of the way through construction, and Raleigh, we haven't done anything with that yet, that's, maybe we just haven't started.
And where, so you're planning on selling wholesale in addition to supplying your three, your three retail locations?
Yes.
With this cultivation facility?
And there is a state tax associated with the grow too, right? We talked about that, it's in the, it's in agreements like three, six cents a pound or three cents a pound.
That's right, well, you're, no, not for the, for the grow, there isn't, it's just on the, on the retail side of things. So you've, you've got the $25 per pound for anything that leaves the site, that's your...
There's no additional one?
There's nothing additional to that. It would be if the retail component, you get, you get 3% and 3%, 3 comes from the state, 3 comes from the local community agreement.
That's one of the reasons why I need more time, because we have, I haven't done a wholesale, not a wholesale, but a grow facility agreement, so...
Now, this particular host agreement includes the cultivation as well as the recreational, and then there's a paragraph in here, and this is hypothetical, because obviously we've never seen this, but there's a successors and assign paragraph in here. Could the recreational portion of this be carved out and subbed to somebody else with our, it says there needs to be permission to assign any of the rights under the agreement, but I assume that paragraph means that theoretically, somebody could come in here, or they could come in here asking, hey, we've got somebody who wants to take the front end of the store over and sell, as opposed to that person coming in here to us, maybe they just...
No, I don't think the retail, I think it's gonna be completely separate for retail. If they wanted to assign their cultivation to someone else, you would have to get approval from the board.
We do, right.
But I think the retail sales would be different.
Okay.
What's your timeline, like, when would you hope to start building?
Well, we are, for construction and excavation, we would love to get that in before the winter comes, and at least get that portion done. I've got a feeling, if everything works the way we'd like to, we'd probably be erecting steel in January. It's probably the worst possible time you could be doing it, but, so, but we're gonna move along in the process as quickly as we can, but it's a, you know, we have to complete the designs, we have our floor plans, and this is, we were actually in front of the Planning Board, I think, a year ago, because we wanted, we were getting signs, we'd like to get back and do this, but we had ideas of a different layout, a different floor plan, so we just need to pull ourselves together and identify exactly what we want for a floor plan, what the second floor is gonna look like. So the design, we have at least six weeks to do that, we have to get in front of the Planning Board, let them know what we plan, they're very curious as to what the facade looks like, so we've got, we've got some work doing that, and then, you know, permitting is probably another six weeks of permitting, and then we could be ready to go. We have a contractor that we've been working with that's doing it, that did our build-out for Millbury, and did our build-out for Tingsborough, and we'd have them come here and do this as well.
Who does your community outreach, is it you guys?
I'm sorry?
Who does your community outreach?
We do it ourselves.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have anything lined up or planned for Grafton?
Nope, haven't even thought about it yet. So, but we could do that at a moment's notice, but I just, yeah, we're...
One of the things that concerns me a little bit is there are a lot of community host agreements that towns are giving out. Some towns are harder to get than others, we, I think we have a pretty open mind here in Grafton, and, you know, we're very, I think, pro-business about it. But this is number, well, I guess five, but four really, because Machete's gone away. And the first announcement of a community outreach meeting I've heard, I just heard tonight, and it's getting to be a little bit, so I would encourage you to line that up sooner rather than later. I know that, you know, a lot of the CHAs are being sold and transferred, and that's all well and good, but, you know, we want to make sure that we've got some, you know, industry growth here coming in soon. Anyone else?
No, those are all my questions.
Well, just one other thing that I find that's interesting, one of the things we'd like to do, and it's what we're doing down in Lakeville as well, we're off the grid. We supply our own energy with a tri-generation equipment, and that's, that's use of natural gas, so, which is a clean source of energy. We take that, those generators that are creating that electricity, and we're taking the heat off of those generators, and we're using those things in a, in a process to create chilled water. We take that chilled water and we create our air conditioning, our dehumidification, we also take the heat off that generator, and that heats our facility for the winter. So these are things we have, we would like very much to do with Grafton and the utilities that supply energy here as well, so these are things that we'd like to do. It's very modern, it's the way that, because we use a lot of, a lot of power, it's the way this industry should be running because of the amount of electricity that we use. And Massachusetts is not building plants, they're shutting them down, so anything that we can do to help to be energy conscious, that's what we're attempting to do. And your natural gas supplier is excited about this, we've had multiple meetings with them.
Excellent.
So, thank you.
Can I follow up on one thing that you just mentioned? I mean, the regs for CCC here, the webpage is just all these hyperlinks, so I've read a lot of them, but for non-retail, just so we're clear about the requirement for having an outreach meeting, is there one for cultivation and for grow?
That's a good question.
Not sure, but we plan to have one.
So you're gonna have one either way?
We'll have one anyway.
Because I'm so stuck on the retail that they must have, must have, it's part of the checklist, but I don't know, I don't know if you have to, but if you gotta do it anyways, doesn't matter, but I don't know if it's a checkbox for you to submit your application or not.
Right.
Yeah, it's a good question, I'm not sure of the answer.
I think it should be...
I'll email you the link.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, we've been in this business long enough, I know almost everything, but he's got me.
I haven't seen it.
I feel like I know...
Bob, we've had to have one in Lakeville, so I assume we have to have one.
But usually that's not scheduled until, aren't there very, the steps are that first you get the host agreement, and then you have your public meeting.
Well, you do have to, the public meeting has to be done within a certain period amount of time when you open, so they do have to correlate, so I'd have to take, and I don't know if that's a year, six months?
It's six months for retail, I know that much. Six months, within six months of it being issued, they have to have, the outreach meeting has to occur.
Right, right, so it may be a little premature for us to have it at this point, but it doesn't mean that we can't have an outreach, two outreach meetings, just so we get input from neighbors and people that are in the area, and they have concerns, we'd like to hear about them, better to hear earlier than later, so...
Sure.
So I would just like to add to that, because as a newer board member and only having one other host agreement, and I voted it down last time specifically because of lack of public input, so, you know, I'm not gonna, I just want to say, like, I wouldn't change my mind for, you know, the same sort of condition, that I think it should be a requirement of the board, that, you know, even if it's not a state requirement, that we should have public outreach or public input upfront.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Well, and we're not signing it tonight.
No, I know, I'm just, yeah, yeah.
So people have, you know, if there's questions, concerns, they certainly should contact us and let us know.
Yep, yep.
Absolutely, and we'll make it, when we do have this come back up on the agenda, we'll make people aware of it.
Great.
All right, thank you so much.
We're gonna email that, well, did you find it? Can you, we edited this with legal counsel, so I wanted to give you a hard copy.
Okay, okay, great.
So that'll be the document we send back to bring to the board, to have them vote on and sign at a subsequent meeting, hopefully next week, if not, the week after.
Yeah, I know, it's not before.
Thanks, good to see you guys, thank you.
Well, I know that, I mean, they're gonna really, like, their presentation is so professional.
All right, so next up on the agenda, vote to sign special election warrant. I'll receive that in our packets, I think it looks good, I will entertain a motion.
I don't want to sign it tonight, I think we need time to...
For the special election?
Oh, for the special election.
Twenty-nine, not the one, not the, not the town meeting warrant.
Usually they're combined for May, we combine the election and town meeting.
Oh, so they're separate.
Just for the election.
Oh, just for the election, all right.
To replace Bruce.
All right, I move the board sign the October 29th, 2019 special election warrant.
A second.
All right, motion made and seconded, any further discussion?
I just have a quick question, how much does it cost again, 10, 10 grand?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll make an adjustment under Article 1 for our budget, the current budget.
Any else?
No.
All right, motion made and seconded, hearing no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we will see all the voters on October 29th. All right, next up, vote to sign memorandum of understanding with Verizon.
So this MOU is because we moved from South Grafton to the Cable Studio out front here, this piece of equipment is given to us by Verizon so we can broadcast. Once it becomes ours, we will need to maintain it, and we need it to broadcast, as I said, the maintenance of it, there hasn't been any maintenance on the first one, but they want to give it to us and have an MOU signed relative to it. If there is any maintenance, our upgrades need to happen after we take it on, and technology changes, we'll use franchise fees to do that. But there's no other way to broadcast than with this particular piece of apparatus.
All right.
And I'm not gonna tell you how many encoders or decoders it has, because it's above me.
Irrelevant, since we need it.
I think there's five, and two.
It says five encoders. It says five encoders. Two decoders, yeah. Okay, I move the board vote to sign the memorandum of understanding with Verizon as submitted.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to select board slash TA reports, you want to go first, Tim?
Sure. I'll try and be brief. Today, we sat in a conference call with the state regarding Triple E, they are doing their spraying tonight, start at seven o'clock, it's probably already begun, it's all the communities, some in southeast and Middlesex County, and Worcester County, and then a couple of the counties to the, to the south and the west, to the southwest. So it's not just Grafton that's having this, we had a conference call today, two of the questions that I asked on that call to the Department of Public Health was relative to surveillance, so the state has traps over the weekend, one gentleman from DPH took the traps, analyzing the mosquitoes that were caught for Triple E, we'll know those results tomorrow if there are mosquitoes that have Triple E, just because the cases continue for human cases, an abundance of caution, for that call, you know, we tried to stress it in the Code Red call, we tried to stress it on the website, the spraying might be 20% of the solution, right? They spray, doesn't get all the way to the ground, you know, people have to take precautions with what they wear and wearing bug spray, so I just wanted to impress upon everybody who's listening, and whenever we do messaging, it's all about long sleeve, long pants, bug spray, and just rescheduling your activities not to be between dusk and dawn, because those are the things that they focus on. It's very sobering when you're on a conference call with people, and you say, well, what are the symptoms? They don't even give you, like, a scenario where it's good.
Right.
And they give you a lot of, you know, we focus on the five Ds, and that's what people should do, so when they can't really give you any, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a virus, and you need to, your immune system has to respond, it makes you, you know, very much aware of your surroundings when you go outside at night, so you got to, we got to just impress upon people they got to be careful. So with that, that's all I have for that particular piece, is just to make a pitch to make sure people follow what's the best advice from the state relative to the five Ds and personal protection. Budget directive to pivot to a decent subject, they, they will be due back in the first week of November, and we did the budget message to obviously boards and committees and to department heads, they were directed to, you know, ask for, for what they need for fiscal '21, and to give descriptive detail in their proposals for what their goals are, not only, you know, staff or redundant missions that they always put out, I wanted them to rethink about articulating what those dollars will be used for in more detail than it's ever been, so there could be a lot of verbose-ness in the budget relative to what the people are requesting, but I think it'll be good for transparency's sake for everyone to see what people are asking, what their mission, and what they're going to use those dollars for, so we really try to step that up, more so than we've done in the past. If you look at the detail on the budget, there is a lot there, but there'll be even more as we go through. The super, back to spraying, I should have reorganized this report a little bit, the school department and I are trying to arrange for the school grounds to be sprayed for mosquitoes, so superintendent requested that, and then we put a call into central mass mosquito control to see if there's some way to do it ahead of the vote of town meeting, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. DPW and the library financing, we did have to change one warrant article that we made a pitch to this board last week about, at the end of the day, we want to, you know, not impact the taxpayer in any way, shape, or form more than what we would have had we borrowed the same amount of money, but as we started to talk to library, building official, building committee folks, MLPC, the friends of the library, we realized that there was some fear and consternation that we were kind of taking away from their appropriation, so we modified the warrant article just to deal with DPW, so we'll borrow more for DPW, but at the end of the day, from a financial management standpoint, we'll just borrow less for the library, because their bids came in a million and eight less than what their estimates were, so, but I think they were feeling we were taking away from them ahead of the project getting off the ground, so we just have to, you know, be honest and tell people we're just not going to borrow as much, we're going to borrow less than what we would have borrowed if everything stayed the same, but the article will change just to satisfy those people who are nervous that somehow they're going to get not as much as they were promised under the original vote back in May. So that'll, we'll go over that in the warrant article, I brought David in, David I was with Unibank, if we had questions, because we originally wanted to do it this way because we were worried that there would be a potential for some of the debt service payments not to be exempt from Proposition Two and a Half. We know we need to make application through a DE2 process, which will be on your agenda next week, to make that request to the Department of Revenue, where they'll say, yes, that makes sense that you hit ledge, and if there's an overage, we'll allow it. It's not a given that they'll allow it, but we feel comfortable, we can make the case, and we've had discussions with people offline, if you will, with TOR, that we'll have that approval, so we want to keep it exempt, so we don't use general fund money to pay that debt service, and we want to hold the taxpayer harmless by keeping the projects in line with the total of both combined. Actually, it should be $800,000 less, because it's a million, the DPW needs eight, an $800,000, it was 1.8 less for the library, use one for the, for the DPW, still leaves $800,000, you will just not borrow. So, I know I made the pitch last week for something different, but after listening to people's feedback after I did that, we changed course, so can, can you maybe give the board a little bit more info on that?
Sure, coming up.
Good evening.
Hi.
Been having discussions with Tim and Becca and with Amy Perkins, the town treasurer, about the situation with the public works facility and the library, and we've been, we've known for some time that the public works facility was going to be requiring additional borrowing authorization, but then we learned more recently that the library project appears to be under budget. The issue there is that the town borrowed $8.5 million to the library in short-term notes in May, so the town has the money already borrowed for the library, so the discussion was, as an alternative to simply requesting additional authorization for the, or instead of requesting authorization for the public works facility, would be, the thought was to ask town meeting to amend the vote authorizing the library project to allow some of those monies to be spent for the public works project, but I think that Tim has been talking about some difficulties in, and some reactions to that, which might make it more feasible for folks to simply pursue an additional authorization for the public works facility.
So my concern, after I got to thinking about this from last week, was everything that we do with the library comes with a big fat caveat, which is the state. The state is going to kick in about 50% of the overall cost, we're going to be reimbursed that money.
Right.
And we've had to jump through a number of hoops to get this particular library built because of the hoops, you know, anytime we have a discussion about moving money around, people start to worry, okay, well, what about the grant reimbursement? My worry was, okay, if our library project is going to come in 1.5 million under budget, is the state still going to kick in as much money as they would have? Why wouldn't the state just come back and say, okay, well, congratulations on having your library come in under budget, but we're not going to give you the same amount of money as you budgeted for originally, we're just going to cut that back by $750,000 or something, so I didn't, my concern, and I'm glad that this was rethought a little bit, and it sounds better to me now, was that we might end up jeopardizing some of the money we would get back from the state entirely, but I'm glad that, you know, we're, we're sort of just going to, I think borrowing less for the library in particular is a better idea, I think that voters are going to be a little bit more comfortable hearing that, I think that's probably going to be, again, okay with the state, but we want to follow up on that, and then deal with the, deal with the DPW facility.
Right.
Yeah, we have a conference call with, I have a conference call with the state about the grant, so it's a forty, on, on average, 45.5% reimbursable, so, and everybody knows the program, you know, third, a third, a third, over three years to do the reimbursements, so if we spend less because the construction's less, they will give us less, so just to be clear, that, you know, if it turns out to be 750 grand, it will be, but it'll be 750 grand that we didn't spend anyways.
Right.
So, yeah, but to allay the fears of people think we're, you know, reaching over here for another project, I, I totally agree with them, but I know that in the back of my mind, that we're still going to be a net decrease of 800,000, all things being equal, and not impacting the taxpayer, which is the ultimate goal for me, of just being transparent, but also coming in under for both total, so we're fortunate that it's 10 million for construction versus the 12 we thought it would be.
And by borrowing less, we're still going to keep that 10% contingency on the library, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so with the, they're up around 16 or 17%, if you add the 800,000, it's would be available as additional authorization that we don't want to borrow, because we know that that site is very much involved in terms of probing that site before we started to build, because when we bought it from Parrott, we did a lot of, you know, due diligence before we bought it.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I think that the question will be, and we'll be monitoring this as, well, the town, the current plan is that the town is going to be renewing the notes that were issued this past May, in May of 2020, and borrowing additional monies for the library, more or less, it's the money that's in anticipation of the remaining grant from the MBLC. At that point, we can evaluate whether, if the monies that have been borrowed aren't needed, perhaps some of the notes that will be coming due could be paid down, principal could be paid from note proceeds, and certainly the plan is that, at this point, that the town would issue bonds for the local share of the library in May of 2021, certainly if it doesn't happen in May of '20, any excess note proceeds would be used at that time to reduce permanent borrowing and thereby producing the reduced impact that Tim is referring to.
Okay. So that was that piece, I have a couple more things.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, David.
David.
Do you need me to stay, or? When we get to the article, I, you probably...
I'm good.
You're not signing the warrant tonight, it's just a review, so I think you're fine, you can go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll be quick, on other grant-related news, the legislative delegation did secure funding for public safety purposes and to have paid internships with high school students, so we're trying to give them real-life work experience and compensate them, so those are two, two things we want to thank the delegation for, so I appreciate Mike Moore and Dave Meridian for getting those earmarks for us, and we're waiting on the grant program, grant documents from them now. The ramps you can see outside, they have been poured and sealed, we're waiting on the railings to be installed, we may, under Article One of the town meeting, request additional funding, if you remember, we had alternates relative to the ramps, we did two, we have one more at the memorial hall, the veterans' hall to the left of the back of the gym, it's still metal, that needs to come out to match the concrete one to the right we just installed, so we may modify the budget to increase for that particular purpose, to do that, but we haven't, we haven't cut our humps around that yet, but I did want to at least give you that update in terms of that project almost being complete, and we may want to adjust the budget upwards to do that last ramp. If anyone goes in and out of those doors, you'll know exactly what we're talking about in terms of the expansion and the contraction of the steel, and the rotting steel as you open the doors, it's just not, we can do better. Becca's attending the Commission on Disabilities' first meeting on the 19th, and they're going to discuss the application for the grant round, which is due in October, so they're going to, you know, take that report for the disability transition plan, and figure out what the, what the low-hanging fruit is, and start to categorize things, and then figure out what the application would be for the grant for the bigger items. Over the next two days, construction on Worcester Street, outside of 80 Worcester Street, they're doing a pretty substantial upgrade to the water relative to a sprinkler system inside that building, so there will be construction out there, so during the day from eight to four, or seven to four, probably, they saw I cut the road today, people should just try to avoid Worcester Street, it's a very difficult street to avoid, I understand that, but they are upgrading that facility for a dental facility to go in there, which is a good upgrade, and obviously goes to new growth for us, so we want to see that development happen, but people will be impacted by traveling on Worcester Street. Also on Worcester Street, number six, I sent you a long memo about this, and I don't want to talk about the details of it, but between Bushland Pack and Off the Common Antiques, there's a house, there's a barn behind that house, that barn is not safe, and the owner is scheduled to take down the barn portion tomorrow. We've talked to the landowners on both sides, they're aware of it and support it.
I was just at Bushland Pack today, and they, they, they're having people not even go down that side.
Yeah, they don't want to walk down.
Yeah, they don't want people to, to walk down there.
Yeah, they're doing that because they, they didn't know if they were going to start today, so I was with Mike today, too.
Oh, okay.
So, but that whole coed-off area, they'll keep people out of there when they, when they start to demo it, so we're hoping that happens tomorrow, so that could be another traffic problem, too, for folks. Kickoff meeting with the library for the GC, Andy and Beth, we gave them notice last week after you voted to award the contract to the GC, they had a kickoff meeting today, so that is underway. We have an ethics training tomorrow at 6:00 PM at the police department, it needs 20 people to run, we have 21 people right now, we can accommodate up to 45, so if other people wanted to come for that ethics training, it's something that the clerk was trying to coordinate with, I forget the gentleman's name, the attorney there, but they do, they do onsite training as well as training in Boston, but we wanted to have one here, we've been trying to coordinate since June, finally happening in September, so if you want to go to that, everyone's welcome to attend.
And I'm sorry, that's at the police station?
It's at the police station at 6:00. They will not answer a particular, like, hey, this person did that, is this right or wrong? It's, it's not, it's not like that, it's a training, but what the law says, and what perception is, and what reality is, so I just don't want to mislead anyone's expectations, and that's, that's what I have for my report this evening.
A quick question, are they doing work on the Apple Gas location? It looked like they, like, put some retaining, like, some...
They did the self-fencing.
Yeah.
That was up once, they did, we've been on them to aid...
But I mean, they cut the weeds down.
Yeah, yeah, we've been on them for that, because it's been such an high school, so...
Yeah.
They are, they are starting.
Okay.
But, but construction has not begun, but at least...
But their plans are done?
Yeah, yeah, they're all approved, they just need to...
Everything's approved, they just haven't started.
Pull a building permit and go physically do construction, but we made them go out and do the weeds.
Okay.
And reestablish the...
Yeah, I mean, it looks like something's actually going to happen again.
Happen again.
You know, like, it's like, oh, it's coming!
Yeah.
Yeah, great.
I'm glad they didn't finish it, I mean, as much as I want it done, but we, we have a goal, right, to get new growth to be a certain place.
Right.
So Mary got us to like 50 million, which is...
Amazing.
Probably the highest we've ever been.
Yeah.
So with that not in the mix, it just adds to what she needs to get us next year. I hope she's not listening to this, but, but yeah, so that is the initial clearing of the land, certainly much better to look at.
Yeah.
Hopefully, construction starts soon.
Yeah, that's great.
They can't give you a hard date on what will happen.
No, I just, I mean, it just looked like something was finally starting, I know there's been a lot of starts and stops with that site, but, you know, we've been waiting for a long, just because it is right on Worcester Street, and, you know, it has not been the nicest, you know, to look at and all that, so it's nice that they're starting again.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Coming along.
That's good.
Okay, anyone else? Updates, anything?
Nope, none for me.
Okay.
Um, well, I have one, so Tim had mentioned disabilities meeting next week on the 19th, correct? So that will be the first meeting for that. EDC also met last night, and just a quick update to the board, the biggest topic of discussion was shop Grafton and making this year, you know, more successful than last year, which was the first year, and social media presence for Grafton businesses, so they want to make a shop Grafton website, or even a social media page to try to get all the businesses in town to go, so people even from out of town can just go to one place to find everything in Grafton. And then also, the hotel study was brought up, too, do you want to give an update on that, or do you want me to?
You can.
Okay.
Only because, because I, because I know we published it, you know, there's some whole, we actually have a...
Yeah, just because... Yeah, just because we discussed it. So, um, just to update the board, so, um, the hotel study, um, came back as something that, you know, graft in could do. Um, the biggest hang up in the discussion last night was that hotels would want to see a restaurant within walking distance or nearby. So there was a discussion of what close by is. And, you know, like, could people walk from Wyman Gordon to Reunion? And there's no sidewalks, you really couldn't. What most developers would wanna see is a restaurant on the same site as a hotel.
Right, right.
So whether it's up by Tufts or Wyman Gordon site, um, you know, that's something that would need to happen.
Yeah, so it did, that, that's the initial thing is that it can be supported. We have a, a staff person whose husband works for Hilton, and he came in and read the report with us and told us where, where they might uh, have been deficient in terms of looking at their occupancy, how much they can charge, how many rooms, how much it'll cost. So all those things, questions, we, you know, we did the study because we wanted to have a conversation with hotel developers.
Right.
But it really needs to be, you know, the, the best spot is off the Mass Pike. That whole parcel, that twenty-nine acres, has to be redeveloped as a, as a lifestyle center. It has to be a piece of the puzzle is a ho- hotel, but everything else, all the other amenities for shopping and restaurants have to be in front of Wyman Gordon. So we need the developer to, to, to use that report as, alright, that's gonna be one piece, but no one's coming until everything else.
Until everything else. And so that was kinda the chicken and egg discussion, right?
It's always like that, right?
And so it's like, okay, so, you know, how do we get this development around there in order to get a good hotel?
Well, Heneman has the, the listing for the twenty-nine acres, and they are working diligently to find that lifestyle component.
Mm-hmm.
You know, at the end of the day, Wyman Gordon's gonna sell it to the, to the highest bidder for what it's zoned for.
Mm-hmm.
That's our dream is to have it redeveloped for that purpose. You know, will it end up being a, a UPS warehouse? I hope not, but it's zoned for that.
Mm-hmm.
Wasn't, um, the Bullock Plaza was sold recently too, wasn't it?
Uh, there's been rumors of that for a very long time.
But it's not, oh, but you haven't heard anything?
I can't confirm, I have no idea.
Alright.
That's unfortunate, because that would be really convenient too. That could be something that would just draw in either something for in front of Wyman Gordon or the opposite. Like if, if something for Wyman Gordon were to click, then all of a sudden that parcel, I think, becomes more attractive.
I agree.
Yeah, well, for sure.
Okay. Well, keep doing what we're doing.
There's been a lot of interest.
That's all I have.
You know, Fitz's Cowwash was gonna buy that parcel, and, and we don't know if that was gonna happen and for what reason, but we've had meetings with numerous people who are interested in that parcel. Changing the zone helped, so that whole mixed use thing, you know, people are drawn to that. Uh, it's about location and it's about the economy and what people are willing to sell it for.
Yeah.
That's all I have.
Okay. And, oh, uh, that reminds me, um, we should probably put this on the agenda for the next meeting, and we could talk about when that is. Um, but we, I don't think presently have a representative on the D P W committee, because I think that was Bruce.
No, we voted on that last couple meetings ago.
Yeah, I think we did.
We did. The first one that I was back for.
Is it Peter?
Yep.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Yep.
I'm sorry. My mistake. I thought it was Bruce.
No, it was Bruce.
Right, and then it became Peter.
And then, then it was Peter.
Alright, never mind. Okay, uh, moving on correspondence, um, I think we only have one.
Are you, are you thinking of Richard Whitney's letter?
Yes.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure that got read.
Yeah.
But if you're planning on doing it, that's great.
Um, let me go through, uh, I'm writing you today. In reference to warrant articles that you'll be voting on tonight, we're actually not voting on them tonight, just discussing them, but the T A is bringing forth Article twenty-five, which is to sell or lease the land off of Institute Road number seven to a cell tower company. As far as I can see, this is no good for the town, and this is being done for one company, only Crown Castle. I know that the T A and the town planner have been in contact with Crown Castle, which is going through the planning board now to put a new cell tower on Greenie Drive. It has come to the attention, uh, I can't read the next word, warrant article. Oh, I think that, that this warrant article would help the town with bringing money in over thirty-year deal. There is no justification to or, to add or to enter into a lease or sell this property off Institute Road. The amount concerned of represented in this warrant article and putting a cell tower on said property is outlandish. As a cancer survivor and having more cancer now, I strongly ask the board, do not put this on the warrant for October and pass it by. I'm a strong believer that we need to make money for the town, but to do this for one company and only one company, I am sorry, it is wrong. So I'm asking you, uh, to ask your fellow board members to say no to this. Um, please, I will be the biggest opponent on this warrant article if it does not, if it does get on. I'm not threatening in any way, but I will be putting up signs and billboards all over town on this warrant article if it makes it to town meeting. You do know that I speak my mind and I'm a firm believer what the town needs and doesn't need, but you have the right to put on what, put what you want on the article as you see fit, and I have the power as a taxpayer um, and a butter to this property with my neighbors to have the right to stand up and say no. Sincerely, Richard Whitney. Okay. Thank you, Richard. Uh, speaking of, moving on to discussion draft town meeting warrants.
So what was in your packet got updated today, so I'm gonna give you a new draft, not a lot of changes. Uh, in general terms, there's a lot of housekeeping items relative to the, the warrant. Uh, just to give you, there's thirty articles. Um, a lot of housekeeping, a lot of C P C. There's the vote to join central mass mosquito control. We talked about the cherry sheet adjustment for seventy-one thousand. I'm not gonna go in the order that they're in right now. It's gonna give you an overview and then we'll go into the specifics if I could.
Sure.
Uh, D P W funding, we covered that. Um, obviously, the goal is to keep both projects under budget. One will go over, won't be significantly under with, uh, a minimal or no impact uh, to the taxpayer. Actually, it should work out if we borrowed eight hundred thousand dollars less, we should have uh, about a five dollar annual, uh, tax burden savings. So people will pay five dollars less if we borrow, uh, exactly what's needed today than what we would have borrowed or what people would have paid if we borrowed the full mouthful of workers. Um, road acceptance for DeRosa and one other road, two road acceptances.
This one?
Hmm.
DeRosa's landing?
Mm-hmm. Alright. Uh, long range tree removal, we talked about this before. We have a lot of dead trees. There's a lot of coordination going on with National Grid now because they're taking down a lot of trees. I don't have a funding source as of this very moment, but I need to remove a lot of dead trees that are being surveyed now. I have to be careful in terms of what we determine as a group is the most dangerous because once I label it and I don't take it down and then it falls, then we have a bigger problem. So you have some leniency with me in terms of detail on that particular point. Um, but the bigger thing is replacing those trees and getting them on town, off of town property onto private property, so they'll maintain the tree. That's gonna be the tougher, tougher thing. So that, there's two pieces of that, because we wanna take them down, we also wanna replace them. Because we, we like the designation where trees, obviously, do a lot of things for the environment that are pretty important. So that's on there, and we'll talk about that in more detail too, but dealing with, coordinating with National Grid for what they're taking down before we figure out what we will take down with any appropriation that we get. Uh, other articles deal with, uh, mending the charter and bylaws reflect the select board name change from board of selectmen, so those are them, those are those. Uh, sustainability, we, we voted when we did the energy aggregation to adopt the adder, which was point zero one cent per kilowatt. So that adder needs to be in a revolving account that's set by town meeting for the purposes of sustainability, which might tie in nicely with it. You've talked about and advocated for and even might talk about again tonight, so we have to do that to, to get that money to receive it in and to have it to be expended for those purposes. So that's what that article deals with. Um, easements and appropriation for Adams Road. We talked about this at the last meeting relative to the work that we wanna do on Adams to get the water off of the two neighbors' properties. Um, will require, uh, we, we wrote the article very broadly to accept by gift or take by eminent domain. And we're starting to do that engineering process now, and then we'll need an appropriation to pay for the actual work as well as, uh, any damages for the taking itself. Uh, and then the cell tower one, which, uh, the correspondence was just read on. I just, if I can just stay on that one for one minute, these TVs still don't work, so I apologize for that. There is a cell tower, there's another, you got one for me, thank you. There's already existing cell tower, so you can see how this kinda, the existing one is a twenty Indian path. And Snow Road Rear, which is eighty-four, there's a proposal to put one there, so that's not us. That's some other developer wants to, I think, vacate the twenty Indian bath and move to this particular location. So because we own this seven institute rear and the zoning the bylaws and planning board, you know, wanna put forward town-owned parcels for utilities like this, this made sense for us to consider going out to bid to put a cell tower here, which is further away than any other of these locations, as you can see by the map. So the interesting caveat to this is, you know, when we, it's landlocked, right, so how do you get to this parcel? So when we wrote the bid, the bid spec to go out to bid for this, the person who's the bidder has to be able to find his access. That's part of the proposal, so he needs to tell us how they're going to do that. So whether that's Crown Castle or someone else, it doesn't, it doesn't matter to us. If it's Crown Castle and they can go there and earn the town money, it, it's very difficult. The premise of this is, it's already existing, it's going to go someplace. If we can provide a third option that is consistent with the bylaw or what planning board would like to see, that's why we put seven institute in play for that purpose.
And there's no, there's no room on access on one thirteen Greenie Drive to get in there?
That, I don't know, I don't know what that utility easement is. I don't know what that is on the plan. I'll have to ask Joe Laden for what that is. I'm thinking on the existing path, if Crown Castle has access to that parcel over a permanent easement, they'll be able to access this.
Okay. So the point is, there's going to be a cell, cell tower there somewhere.
Yeah.
We'd rather it be a little bit further away from the neighborhood than closer to.
Yeah, and on our parcel where we can earn.
Making us some money, okay.
So that's why it's on there, and it's written, the way the article's written, when we had discussions with vendors, they want a fifty-year lease. The state law doesn't allow us to do fifty, we can do thirty. So I thought I'd write it to say sell in or enter into a thirty-year lease, so whatever the proposers propose, we'll have the flexibility to act on it based on what town meeting approves.
Okay.
So that would only be, um, so it's one or the other, so if they choose this other location at eighty-four Snow Road.
That's.
Then.
That's it.
Yeah, they're, they're trying to get approval there right now.
Okay.
To get off of this twenty Indian path.
Okay.
So if I can provide them, but there, there's, there's three separate parties from the town. There's, there's the people who built the tower, there's the landowner, and then there's the, the cell phone companies, you know, the A T and Ts and the Sprints. So we don't know all the nuances that they're, the problems they're having.
Okay.
So we're either taking advantage of that situation to benefit the town of Grafton or oh, we're trying to provide an amicable solution for them just to, for someone to go there and provide this service. Because the F C C is gonna tell us, we'll probably, you know, you win some, you lose some in terms of fighting cases for cell towers. We'd probably lose, but if I can provide something that's further away from everybody, I think that's a better solution.
Yeah. And, um, why are they leaving twenty Indian path?
I think they are not happy with the terms of the continu- continuation agreement, so that whatever the lease deal was, I'm gonna guess
Okay.
is a problem.
And how long has it been there on twenty Indian path?
Longer than I've been here.
Okay.
We don't know. We can get that detail. We can, uh, you know, if we wanted to, we could bring Joe in to get the, the, because the planning board has been knee-deep in this.
Okay.
Probably waist-deep is probably more like it, so I can get those type of details.
Okay.
But we thought we could find an amicable way to solve both problems and benefit the town.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so I'll move through the articles.
Sure.
Yep.
So the first, to adjust the F Y twenty operating budget, the only thing we see right now uh, that's a problem is health insurance, and health insurance is not because we didn't budget properly, it's just enrollments. We have a flex spending account, people pay into, if they don't use it, we get reimbursed after eighteen months of not being used. So that kinda helps us get through in that budget, because we can use that to fund the budget, but we don't, we can't rely on that all the time. So with enrollments increasing, um, we will need to make an adjustment. I don't have a, an exact number unless you've done more math today, or you think it might be.
No, there's some additional nuance with the H R A reimbursements that were included in the upgrade, the update to the P E C agreement that we last signed. Where we're now reimbursing people still for H R As, but also, um, up to fifty percent of their deductible if they reach, if they max out on their deductible. But those payments aren't made until the end of the calendar year in December, so we don't actually know yet what the cost is for last fiscal year for that reimbursement. We have really good estimates from, um, N F P, who's a provider based on what other towns get who have similar P E C agreements, and we have encumbered money that we think will cover it. But waiting for, and we're hoping to have numbers by October town meeting, so that when we do this adjustment for this year, we'll know what the costs are for this year for next December when we have to encumber the money. So there's a, some moving parts still, but we know we're gonna have to make an adjustment.
Okay. But it's not in the, it's not in the hundreds of thousands of dollars.
No, 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 no.
It's, it's not, it's not a huge.
Sub a hundred thousand.
Okay.
Alright.
Uh, prior year fiscal bills, we don't have any, more of a housekeeping item. We don't have any at this time, but we have it as a placeholder. Fire department retirements, we do have some, uh, retirements happening in the fire department. Uh, you have a bylaw from nineteen eighty-five or eighty-three where you pay people, I think it's a hundred dollars for every year of service upon retirement. We have a few people going out who have capped out at the age of retirement for sixty-five. So do you have a ballpark?
Twenty-five thousand.
About twenty-five thousand's paid out. Uh, sick and vacation buyback, none right now.
Not a.
But still a placeholder for us forward.
C P C articles up front on the warrant.
Mm-hmm.
Woo-hoo.
We're trying to accommodate, yes, that's what we're doing.
They submitted early.
They submitted early.
Yeah.
So the homestead, Jen, if you wanna talk about any of these, I mean, the, it's, it's preserving the interior of the, of the home. So I don't know if you wanna talk about any of these particular pieces?
Um.
The rest are all adjustments for the state aid.
Yeah, no, um, Cisco Homestead, the C P C has, and the town have supported the homestead in the past. Um, the shell of the building has been renovated or restored.
Hmm.
I guess is the.
Yeah.
Um, and now they're, this is for design, it's not for, to actually do the work, but again, their goal is to make it into a museum. And, um, there will be, you know, the state requires, um, some historical, um.
Preservation.
Preservation restriction on it, and the town, we've done a preservation restriction on it in the past. Ten years ago, it's starting to come, you know, to, to be expired, so that will most likely happen again. Um, just so that they, you know, so their uses, that they don't, they don't restore it, and then they use it for some other use like, you know, sell s- stuff that they shouldn't be selling. They wanna make it a museum, that is their goal. And so, yeah, so they came back. This is, um, you know, it's a project of love. It's been taking a really long time, but it's a really cool part of Grafton history, and I think, um, you know, hopefully the people in the town will support, continuing to support them. Yeah, and the other ones are just, um, they are, um, just the reserves, um, moving money around. Article ten is, um, creating, uh, baseline reports for, for when, one pieces, when parcels are purchased. It's just to basically go in and get an idea of what is on that parcel.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that, um, if the neighbors encroach, if they cut down trees, if, just to have a, just an idea of what is there when we take ownership of it.
And we're splitting that cost, right?
Right.
Four thousand C P C, and then where they're gonna make an adjustment under one, or we'll just use professional technical.
Yeah, and that's because of the C P C law, you know, the state law, that you, we can't. Uh, unless the parcels were purchased with C P C funds, you can't use the funds to do the baseline reporting. Yeah, and, um, wait, is it, what's, are ten and eleven the same thing?
Yeah, we got a little bit of a.
Ten and eleven are the same. Oh, no, no, because, right.
Oh, that's the split.
Once the four thousand, that's the split.
Yeah.
Right, that's the split. Yep, so that's it for C P C.
So twelve is the, the change to the D P W project to, to allow the additional spending to happen relative to the D P W, so we'll have to explain what we've covered here twice now relative to being low on one project, high on another, still minimizing the impact. But it's certainly explaining what the reason is for the, the ledge and that additional cost.
Yeah, we certainly wanna make sure that, like, I don't know if there's graphs or, you know. Yeah, we certainly wanna make sure that, like, I don't know if there's graphs or, you know, some, some, something that, um, you know, people at town meeting can, can visualize what you're saying would be helpful, you know, in terms.
Yeah, we had a nice, you did a nice slide that we, yeah, we, we'll.
Yeah, yeah, just so, you know, people can understand what, what's happening.
Yeah, we can do that. Uh, thirteen, the road improvement stabilization fund that gets appropriated in October for next year's roads. So the list is still being refined by DPW advisory committee. So we, you know, in two thousand twelve, fourteen, well, twelve, we did the first list of the backlog, fourteen, we updated it for the override. You know, when they find, we have the list of what all the roads should be. And we have the list of, in the budget for what roads have been done to date and in fiscal nineteen, which we're doing now. Uh, well, summer of nineteen, sorry, fiscal twenty. So I'm hoping next week, certainly before town meeting and especially at town meeting, to have the list of proposed roads. But because they're still being refined, I don't have that for you tonight. The biggest piece of refinement goes around utilities, so water, sewer, gas and or electric. We wanna, you know, we wanna know what they're going to do before we fix it, so we can coordinate that effort. So that's what, that's what the timing is. Long range tree removal, I talked about that, we need to take down a lot of dead trees due to everything from, I don't think it was the, the Longhorn Asian beetle, but Dutch elm, there's, there's been a lot of gypsy moths have just ruined a lot of trees. So we need to replace them. Right now, we know that the assessors can release overlay up to two hundred thousand. I think they're voting this week to do that, so that may be a component of what we use to fund this. Don't hold me to that, but that's one strategy. Fifteen, Duroche's Landing Road Acceptance, that's obviously gets laid out, you'll have a hearing on it. DPW Engineering Consultant for the Planning Board and the Planning Board walked the street to make sure it's built to our specification before they recommend, did you recommend to accept it and lay it out? So that'll happen. Sixteen is the electrical aggregation revolving account, which I talked about earlier. It's that point zero one cent per kilowatt, which can only be used for sustainability initiatives. So we blocked it out, just like we do with every other revolving account. You'll establish it and then you'll set a spent, spending limit. The estimates for the kilowatts that Grafton uses under the aggregation plan, the yield is about estimated to be fifty thousand. Obviously, you use more electricity, it could be more, so it says seventy-five is the spending limit. If I only get fifty, I can only spend fifty. If I get fifty-five, I wanna be able to spend fifty-five, you know, with appropriate authorization to do it.
Is, is this going to, um, go hand in hand with contract agreements? Like, would, would this need, you know what I'm saying? So how?
It could.
How long is the contract with the current aggregation company?
Uh, what, we did it, I did a three year deal because.
Thirty-six months, yeah.
Yeah.
When year two, year two just started, so we got another two years.
Oh, that flew by.
It started in October, yeah, so two more years with this provider.
Right, so you would have to, with each contract, you would, you would keep the energy adder on?
Yeah, I mean, we, we have to tell DPU ahead of time if we're going to do it or not do it. A board, you know, I think you were the only one here when we voted to do it. And then I think we got authorization from town meeting to do it. I don't think you have to go back under the DPU regs, but if you wanted to take it out, I would have to tell them in the plan ahead of time.
Okay.
If you wanted to remove it for, you know, what are we, nineteen, twenty, two thousand twenty-one?
Right, okay.
Um, so those are those. Eighteen, it deals with the, the drain and easement for Adams Road. Nineteen deals with the funding for that project. Paul gave us an estimate last week, I forget what it was.
Engineering estimates, though, to burn?
Yeah, but the work itself, I, I think you might say, cause we're doing a lot of it in-house in terms of digging the trench and laying the pipe. So it's sub a hundred, but again, what's the funding source? I could be going back to, you know, free cash will be certified, um, the overlay will be released. So there'll be more discussions about what the, the funding strategy is for that one. And we, we hemmed it hard about what, which one do we do first, right? I mean, you get approval to take, to take the property, if you will, and I wonder if you don't get the, the money to do the project. So we, we ended up here, cause at the end of the day, if you don't approve to take it, you're not gonna fund it. So it's a chicken or egg, so we went in this order. I'm sure anybody could argue either side to do one before the other, but this is the one we went with. Uh, at one point, uh, submitted by, your old one had a lot of select board. It doesn't matter to me, but just to make it easy, the charter allows the town administrator to submit things for town meeting as it's necessary or convenient. So I'll do anything you want. If you want select board, I'll put it back, but I put them all as town administrator, unless they were submitted by the Board of Health or CPC.
It's fine.
Uh, town charter amendments, we covered that, uh, in these in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two relative to the select board name change. Twenty-three, the clerk approached us relative to adopting a section of the Mass General Law forty-one nineteen. Surprisingly, it reads horribly, but it allows up to ten percent of our compensation to be provided for if you adopt this section of the code. But then it caps it at a thousand bucks. So she has, if she's certified by the Mass Municipal Clerk's Association, so she's duly trained and authorized, she gets a certificate. If you adopt this particular statute, she can get up to a thousand dollars.
From the state?
Compensation from the town of Grafton.
Additional.
Additional.
Okay.
I, I will tell you that we've done a lot of salary surveys, even internal and external. There's probably two or three that we need to adjust or will probably lose people. I don't think I'll lose Candy if she elects an official, but we need to make her more competitive anyways. This is a tiny step in the right direction. There will be adjustments made in twenty-one for, for her and probably for Barbara, so you're not surprised when they come about. So that was twenty-three, she put that forward, she's duly authorized to do that and. Calvin Improvement Planning Committee, uh, I did send you some information from the, the study committee. And this is the article that they sent to me that I put here and then I gave you more of the, um, the nuance to the committee in a, in a separate email from Matt. I imagine Matt took come in at some point before town meeting.
Sure.
Mosquito control, obviously you have to vote to, um, to join. There will be an impact to the cherry sheet, we'll make that adjustment in Article One, submitted by the Board of Health. Seven Institute, we talked about this relative to the cell tower, this will give us flexibility to sell and or lease the land up to thirty years. And I think that the, the, the last three deal with retained earnings for the sewer department and putting money into particular accounts for O and M. Retained earnings has not been certified as of today, but will be before town meeting. It gets certified at the same time we have free cash certified. And then was there one other one for stabilization? So the one we, we, we've always kinda had a placeholder for, cause we always have, um, growth in the budget. We don't always put money into stabilization, whether it's capital stabilization or municipal cap, municipal stabilization or IT stabilization for that matter. We'll have the ability under thirty, if we decide free cash is robust and we want us not to put money into stabilization accounts, we can do that under Article thirty. But for right now, I have no plan or a dollar if I get to fund that.
Okay. But, but when we talk about it next week before we sign, um, you'll know more, like, you'll be able to tell us, like, what percentage we have and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I can tell you what's in each one.
What's in each one and, and, um, again, overall recommended, you know, what's recommended for stabilization and where, where we are percentage wise.
Yep. Yeah, I did not, I didn't plan for that tonight, but.
No, but I mean, just as we move forward.
And then same thing for, for Article One, we're gonna have numbers for these before we vote on these. In terms of health insurance and.
Not for signing next week, no. That will come as we start to draft the motions and as we start to figure out what the funding source potential is for us, which we really don't know until free cash, new growth, and obviously overlay of the assessors.
So that was my next question, free cash hasn't been certified, it's usually not until the end of September anyway, but.
Yeah.
Do we have any idea from the state?
No, it'll be our own internal thing, we don't think we have any deficit to raise or provide for. But I'm always super lariat about giving a number, because if I, if I say a million and it's nine ninety-nine, people, you know, it's not you, it's everybody else that just kills you when it comes out. Cause I always just, I, I don't even save a number.
Okay.
But it, it will be consistent with previous years, I will tell you that. There's a lot of stability for the past ten years with what the turnbacks are, with what revenue expectations are, what it turns out to be for free cash. It'll be very similar to last year. I can't give you a hot number.
When do you go before FinCon with these?
October three.
October third.
And they'll only really talk to us after you sign it, so.
Right.
They have to draft.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or we'll move on? Meeting schedule? So we've been meeting a lot since June. One of the things I noticed is, and we'll talk about this in a minute with the, um, summary of the Select Board Goals Meeting, is it's sort of hard, I think, to plan in the bigger picture, in the longer term, when you get out of this meeting and then you're sort of preparing for the next meeting within the next forty-eight hours. Um, so I'd like to get back on more of a bi-weekly meeting schedule for us if we could. So what are we looking at for meetings coming up?
Well, we need next week to sign this, right?
Well, I will say historically, we've, it's the first and third.
First and third.
First and.
And then the second Tuesday has traditionally been a workshop meeting. So we, you know, if there's things that need to be done, we do them, but that's, and historically has been set aside to bring in other committees, to be more of a relaxed workshop meeting. Now, that hasn't really happened since, you know, we started to record the workshop meetings as well. You know, it's, it's kind of, and I understand if there's, if there's work that has to be done, we need to do it those nights. But, um, but it's, it's traditionally been first and third with the second being a workshop.
Yeah, and I, I agree with both of you and also from the public standpoint too of, you know, when meetings are being scheduled. So they know when they're happening, it's like we have three meetings in a row and then one off and then two on again and one off. And so it would just be good to kinda have a calendar even eight weeks out, so we all kinda know.
Right.
Yeah, we, we, you know, different boards and different things come up from members. We try to accommodate the public because they have something that needs attention and then we just, we call a meeting for that particular matter.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, I'd love to get consistent where it's October one, October fifteen, you'll meet again on the twenty-first. There's five Tuesdays in October, so do, I mean, you don't wanna meet five times in a month. But if you wanna plan for the one, the second as a workshop and then the third, it's just if things come up, we, we always make this case and everybody's okay with it. Cause the second meeting is supposed to be preserved for that, but if there's some order of business you need to take up, it can only be done by the select board, we do it.
Right.
But it just, it happens all the time, so you end up meeting three times.
Yeah, and, and I think it will, it, it, there's always gonna be something that comes up, but you know.
And we're just not saying no.
No, not saying no, but saying our next meeting is scheduled for this date, you know, and unless it's like time sensitive.
I think it's that, those fourth and fifth Tuesdays, those are the ones that like at some, some points, it's certainly, again, business comes up sometimes. Sometimes it cannot be avoided, which is perfectly fine, but, um, just generally, you know, like just, again, some business can be either moved ahead or moved behind, you know, like wait one more week and have it at the next. But, um, just to, to have a regular, um, schedule. It's like, I went on vacation on workshop week, because traditionally the second week is workshop. Well, some pretty big business was taken up while I was gone. On a meeting that second Tuesday typically would be, would be workshop where votes most likely aren't taken. So, you know, just in terms of planning.
And I was away the last Tuesday in July and.
Oh, I was too.
And I missed a meeting.
Me too.
Yeah, so if we could get, if we could get off of that, that'd be, that'd be fine. So what we're looking at is, we're here again next week and then if we were to do this schedule, we would meet again on October first, a workshop October eighth, and then a regularly scheduled meeting on October fifteenth. Then we've got town meeting on the twenty-first. So it seems to me we would be able to skip obviously the twenty-second and even the twenty-ninth, like we've, we'll have met.
Four times.
Four times that month.
And on, on the fifteenth, what typically happens, if memory serves me, you'll, you know, the first week in October certainly meet. The second probably not in anticipation of town meeting, meeting. So the week of the fifteenth, in this instance, if you know you, cause you have to have a board meeting on the twenty-first, there's usually like one or two items that we wanted to squeeze in, so you don't have to meet again until November first. So that, well, November fifth in this case. So you, you may not have that eighth or fifteenth, depending on what the.
Yeah.
I mean, you could set it as that be the schedule, but if there's just not a lot on the agenda, you'll be chair, you can say, let's just wait until the following week.
Yeah, I mean, I, the only thing I think about the eighth that I'm already thinking of is, you know, we're talking again about free cash and, um, we are getting to the, the time of year where we can start looking ahead on projections for the following year. I know we've, you've, you know, done some work on new growth and you probably have an idea of what we're looking at for FY twenty-one now. Which blows my mind. So that I would probably pencil in for a discussion, even if it's a brief one on the eighth. And then you get into November, we're looking at Tuesday the fifth. Is that? There's no election that day.
No, there's no November election.
Uh, fifth and then nineteenth, fifth, five, twelve, nineteen, then you're in the Thanksgiving week, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't have anything.
Can I ask you a question about November five?
Sure.
The elections on the twenty-ninth, would you meet once the new elected select board member gets sworn in? Would you meet to reorganize or meet just to welcome that person or would you wait till the fifth, given the elections on the twenty-ninth?
I think we'd wait till the fifth.
Yeah. And then we'll do the third, potentially the tenth and then seventeenth and I, you know, if we can avoid getting people in, yeah, the holiday season's busy. If we can avoid a workshop on the tenth, we'll try really hard to do that.
Um, coming back to October too, we will have a meeting at some point before town meeting to go with, with Ray and everything.
Right.
So there'll be an additional, there'll be an additional meeting.
Yeah, that Thursday.
I mean, it's not a long meeting, but there's still a meeting.
Right, so that'll be meeting number five, that one, so we'll have it covered. Okay.
Good.
Actually, so ten seventeen, we should plan, can you guys hold that date for that Thursday?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, and that's sort of, I think segues into our, our next conversation. Uh, summary of Select Board Goals Meeting, um, I know Doreen, you'd asked to, to put this on. I just wanted to say, in going through the summary, there were a lot of good ideas and to keep the momentum rolling, I'd like to see these ideas make it onto agendas. If, I was just gonna throw this out there, if everybody wants to go through and identify their goals and suggest to me when they should make an appearance on an agenda, that would be helpful to me.
Good.
Alright.
Yeah, that's great. And I, I just wanted to add it as an agenda item tonight, so too much time didn't go by. And just to give us an opportunity to kinda discuss it as a board and maybe, you know, read off the top five or ten goals, you know, we don't even need to go into who submitted them, but just so the public has an idea. You know, what, not that it's not televised, but what we talked about. Because I thought it was a great discussion, I thought it was a really positive meeting and, um, a lot of good ideas came out of it. And I, I think having a common vision and like you said, at, you know, like moving forward, bringing these things to the table and talking about them and seeing how they fit in, you know, overall is, um, is helpful.
Yep.
Do you want us to approve these minutes tonight, these goal, no?
No.
Okay.
Well, I, can I just tell you, I, I did call flash vote since it's the first one on there?
Yeah.
And they, they're willing to come out and give a presentation. I didn't wanna have a conference call and go through a whole dog and pony show with myself, but it's really something that the board thinks might be advantageous. So if someone wants to either, either you can direct me to have them come in and give a whole thing to the whole board or have one or two members sit with me through their presentation, then you can bring it back to the full board. Depends how you wanna do it, I think they're in California, so they do travel, so they'll come out.
It's fine by me if you just run through it with them and tell us about it.
I think it's a great thing.
Yeah, I do too.
I can't say anymore than I told you, unless they, you know, do some type of, you know, YouTube video on. I can't say anymore than I told you unless they, you know, do some type of, you know, YouTube video on what, how they do it.
They probably do like pricing and options and like all that stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know.
Either way.
All right, I would like to have a board member there for that because it really, it's you.
Okay.
That's fine. Just schedule it and who can do it, we'll do it.
Yeah.
It's my goal. I'll be there. See, that's citizen surveys for anyone listening who don't, doesn't know what that goal is.
Do you want to go through?
Do you want to read the top five or is that what you were going to do?
Sure, yeah. You want me to do it?
Sure.
Okay, so, um, we ha, let's see, how many did we have total actually?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. That's good. All right, so I'll read the top 10. Uh, citizen surveys, complete streets, public input item on all agendas, which we're already doing. Inclusionary zoning bylaw, Blackstone Bike Way, bike racks, an environmental sustainability goals committee, which is on the agenda tonight. Um, sidewalk connectivity, uh, facilities manager was discussed and, uh, facilities master plan.
All right.
Good.
And I just wanted to give another throw out to trash and recycling because I felt that was unfairly maligned goal.
That ended up as number 22. That's okay.
But that's on there as well.
Yeah.
All right. And another good segue. Next up on the discussion item is proposed charge for Sustainable Grafton Environmental Committee. Doreen, you want to take that away?
Sure. So, um, number seven in our goals was, um, you know, sort of related to the Green Communities Program and, um, finding alternative grant opportunities to fund more green projects. And we had a discussion about, um, grant writers and, you know, the adder funds, which we talked about tonight. And, um, I put together a draft charge of a sustainable Grafton Environmental Committee, which many communities around Massachusetts have. And, and the charge would be to advise the Select Board on proposals that affect Grafton's sustainability and resilience and will recommend developed and monitor programs designed to enhance Grafton's long-term sustainability and resilience in response to environmental resource and energy challenges. The committee will focus its efforts on town, residential and commercial assets, programs and activities. Do you want me to read the whole charge or?
Yeah.
No? Okay.
So you're proposing fi, a five-member?
Yeah, I think a five-member board is, um, a good start. So we've had a couple of things come before May town meetings such as the styrofoam and the trash bag. So all, all this, you know, as we talk about, you know, commercial or education to residential. And, um, you know, maybe reviewing and providing any other proposals that the Select Board looks at as far, or even town meeting that, um, could affect Grafton's sustainability and resilience. So it's just, um, you know, I, I think that, uh, the planning department is doing a lot of great work with this, but I think it would be helpful. There's so many, um, policies, goals and standards and implementation that goes through. It would be, I think, important to have a committee that helps to sort of make recommendations of policies, goals and standards to the board and kind of be helpful to the staff as well. That's my recommendation.
I think it sounds good.
Yeah, I think it sounds great. I know we discussed this at the, at the meeting. Um, is there a, a grant research component in the committee?
There could be.
Okay.
There could be. So, I, I mean, we could leave that up to staff too. I, I'd want to, so, so I hesitate on this because, um, you know, Leah han, handles Green Communities right now, um, which is funded by D O E R and she does a great job with that. So I certainly wouldn't want to, um, you know, take that away since it's working. Uh, there are constantly additional grants that come forward. So, I mean, I think we would have to determine whether or not we'd want a committee member filling out grants or if we'd want to make that recommendation for a staff member to do it. I'd leave that up to Tim and Becca to decide. What typically happens with things like that?
Uh, well, a lot of the grants around sustainability are through, um, Mass DEP.
Right.
And to apply for those grants, you have to log into a portal. So you need access as like a town official to get into that portal for all the data. So those, and those are the ones that come up like,
All the time.
Every three months.
Yeah.
Something new is coming up. And they do the yearly recycling dividends grant program that we get funds for every year just by way of having programs that have already been implemented for 10 years, paid with those, things like that. But I mean, you know, there are, there are certainly other, other grants out there. And even on, you know, even if we had to submit through the portal, you know, we can still discuss
Sure.
Those opportunities with the committee. Um, and if it's something they want to pursue, you know, there's options through the DEP grants. I, I, you know, I think there can be coordination there.
Sure.
And then also, um, you know, looking at measurables. So there's mass energy insight, which I know the town has, right? So, so staff is entering in data of, you know, how we're already reducing on a municipal level, um, our energy usage. And what's helpful about that and having a committee review it is to kind of get the best bang for our buck, right? So kind of look at, okay, we did this and we lowered by 4%. You know, if we do this project next, we can really make a big jump here, saving this much money compared to this. So to, I think to have a group of people really help track that data would also be, um, a bonus.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I just, whenever there's a, the committee, I just, um, I feel like there's work that is better done by town staff and then there's work that's better done by committees. And it sounds like it's a good balance. You know what I mean? Like some things, it's just more efficient. You know, certain grant applications, that sort of thing. But certainly there is a role, I do see a role of a committee as well. It's ju, it's just that, um, how it all comes together is important because sometimes, you know, committee, committees are great. You get a lot of great ideas, but sometimes getting the actual work done.
Yeah.
It's hard.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. The, the effectiveness of it is really going to be determined on what we decide staff does and what we decide the committee does, so.
Right, right. So, no, I'm definitely in support of it. I just, I always like to just point out that, that, you know, committees are great for certain things, but they're not great for everything.
So, um, that being said, Jen, on the list of the committee will, do you want me to structure this in a little more detail or?
No, I, yeah, no, I, I feel comfortable with the way it's written. I just, you know, overall, I want to make sure that, you know, our staff, we, our staff have a lot of responsibilities.
Yeah.
And, um, I just want to make sure that their time is used efficiently as well.
Understood. Yep.
But that's, those are just, you know, I mean, I have concerns. Those are the same concerns I have of any
Any committee.
New committee. Yeah.
Yeah. And I mean, I'll enthusiastically come to the first couple of committee meetings to kind of drive the direction of it too and
Great.
Yeah. I'm happy to take that on.
Sounds good. So, um, would you like a motion?
Um, do we?
Yeah, I, I just want to ask, I, I haven't, I haven't talked to staff about the content of this.
Do you want to just wait?
Yeah, let me just see, let me just see if there's.
Totally fine.
Sure thing. Yeah.
A better way to see the logistics of the coordination, two steps down the road?
Sure.
Staff to put first?
Yeah, I think that's important. I do. And they can make changes and what the road, yeah.
There'll be people who will be interested in it, but I, you know, like Conservation does low-impact development, seminars and workshops to get developers to have a low-impact housing development. So that would be part and parcel of it. You know, energy reduction plans, you know, one component is mass save and how we push that out to people and get people engaged in that. So I just, just let me let them, let people look at it first.
Absolutely. I think that's a good idea.
Okay. I think that's it. We don't have any meeting minutes, right?
Well, I thought we did. Do we not?
No, these are in draft form, but Peter sent me his notes and I want to just cross-reference with what I have.
The goals.
So we're up to except for that last meeting.
Just before we go, we got a
Except for the last meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
We've got a couple of things assigned. One of them is a special election warrant. The other is the, um, the 61A notice we took action on, I think, last week?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's that stuff. And then executive session, Mrs. Tiki on this?
Do you want to do it? They've been in the, in the folder for a while, so it's just one.
Yeah, they, well, they should be reviewed in executive session by the board.
Yeah, then approved and then there's pieces we can released after they're redacted if something still continues.
We get, um, we got Dr. Courtney at some point about the other thing. So we can do that when we talk to her next. I would imagine it'd be next week maybe.
Yeah, you want it, can we talk after or you can tell me exactly?
Yeah. Um, and then this, um, do I sign the, the tape, the Verizon thing on the back?
Oh, yeah.
Was it for the, was the motion for the chair to sign?
It wasn't.
Enter in too. So it's just one section you can sign.
Okay.
Do you want a different motion?
No. They'll, they're going to be fine. They would, they would, they would have been fine with me signing it, but I don't, I don't like signing an MOU without
We already have the equipment.
You guys knowing that. Somebody's signing it.
I keep all that in a folder. I'm sorry.
All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion being seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.